I'll call this regular council meeting in the Village of Graham and Anne to order. It is 7:30 PM and with us for prayer tonight is Pastor Adam Demarchand. Thank you.
We want to show our love for each other in the decisions we make. And God, last, I'd ask for some wisdom. I think often we think decisions are between a good choice and a bad choice, and I don't find that life's often like that. Sometimes it's a good choice and a good choice, or a great choice and a great choice. It takes a lot of wisdom. Would you give that to each one of our leaders today? In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. I'm going to keep my opening remarks brief, given the length of our agenda tonight. I wanted to flag the fact that Friday is Remembrance Day. There will be a service at the Senate half at the Fire Hall, I believe, at 10:30 that morning, so just a reminder for everybody. And I do want to wish everybody a safe and prosperous lobster season. Hopefully, that will open at some point this week, weather permitting, and I think everybody knows how much our community depends on that economic driver, so hopefully it'll be a good season. So with that, we'll move on to item number four, which is disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing none, we have adoption of the minutes, we have the regular council meeting of September 12, a special meeting of October 5th, and a special meeting of October 25th, and I'm looking for a motion for approval.
I will make a motion to approve those three.
You heard the motion from Counselor Toll. Do we have a seconder?
No second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. So, the next one is additions to the agenda, but I think it's more like flexibility to the agenda. I understand we're removing item 14.10, the budget update, so we'll do that at a later date. The economic development report at 15-3, I believe we're also going to defer till the next meeting. And I would like to move up the reading of the bylaws 16.1. I'd like to move it up to the next agenda item, just because we just left our public hearing, and I think it's appropriate if we move that, do that immediately following this conversation. So with all that, is there anything to actually add to the agenda? Could I have a motion to make those changes, please?
Make a motion to make those changes?
Heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. So with that, we're moving to, let's call it 6.5, which is the bylaw reading. It's bylaw number 56-22, the bylaw to amend by law 39-04, the rural plan bylaw.
Whereas the Village of Graham and Anne is desirous of enacting a new rural plan bylaw, and whereas Section 15.3 of the Community Planning Act permits waiving the bylaw being read in its entirety as long as notice is described in Section 70 of the Community Planning Act has been fulfilled, and whereas Section 71(c) has been completed, I therefore move that we proceed with first and second reading by summary and title only of bylaw 56-22, the rural plan bylaw.
You heard that motion by Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder?
No second.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. I'm a little disappointed, we're not asking Counselor Greenlaw to read the 50-page document, but that's okay.
(laughing).
I didn't want it to.
I know. So, I will say we had, well, no attendance at our public hearing that we had just before this meeting, but this, the first and second reading doesn't close the discussion on the rural plan. If there is comments, there is still an opportunity to do so going forward, and we would encourage anyone who does have comments to reach out to us. In the meantime, I'm going to turn this over to Counselor Greenlaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, for the first reading of bylaw number 56-22, bylaw to amend by law 39-04, the rural plan bylaw, with these additional changes, PID number 01281997. Current zone rural has a requested zone to be mixed. PID number 15034671, current zone is mixed, it's requested to be changed to rural. 15034689 is current zoned mixed, requested to be rural. PID number 1286673, current zone is industrial, it's requested to be mixed. PID number 1281393, current zone is rural, it's requested to be mixed. PID number 1278688, current zone industrial, has been requested to be mixed. And there is a motion to remove Section 4.5 and create a schedule of fees. And a second reading of bylaw number 56-22, bylaw to amend by law 39-04, the rural plan bylaw. Do you want the changes read again?
I think we all need it the first time, but I think we need a motion after the first reading, so.
Okay.
Okay. So do we have a motion to accept the first reading of the bylaw 56-22?
I'll make that motion.
Heard the motion from Counselor Turner. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. And the second reading, title only?
Title only. Bylaw number 56-22, bylaw to amend by law 39-04, the rural plan bylaw.
And a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept that reading.
First by Counselor Toll.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Jennifer from Dillon, who was here with us and just gave applause. I think she's almost happy to be rid of us, but we'll try not to take it too personally. There is an incredible amount of work that went into the document, and we do appreciate your help getting us through this, and our patience with all of our many suggestions over the past year. So seeing no RCMP, I think we're safe to move right on to the 10-minute open session. I'm going to assume that no one's going to jump up, so we'll move on to item number 11.1, Brookside Golf Course. Mike Park to speak.
Alyssa wanted me to haul out Yo' Bonnie, and I wouldn't do it.[499.52][499.52](laughing).
It would fit in well.
I know. Madam Mayor, Counselors, I appreciate this opportunity to come before you to speak on behalf of the Graham and Anne Golf Course, formerly known as the Brookside Golf Course. As you guys know, in the spring, the existing membership ownership of the golf course had made the decision not to operate the golf course anymore. It had just come to its time, where it was too much time and effort for them. So they were going to just close it and turn it into a cow farm or something, but anyway, they reached out to a membership, a group of us, we'll call the co-op, where we met with them, and they gave us the opportunity to lease their golf course and operate it on a one-year term, to see how that would go, and then moving forward perhaps a longer term from that. So the co-op was formed of Dwayne Green, Pat Kronk, and myself, and the three of us, with the help of CAO Rayner, and of course, Council. We formed the co-op and we operated the golf course as kind of a fly-by-the-seat-of-our-pants thing. Not too many people have experience in operating a golf course, but we managed to make it work, and outside of, I mean, there were head bumps in the roads, lawn mower caught fire, and stuff like that, but it was a pretty, pretty successful season. I think if you speak to anyone who golfed there this year and has golfed in years past, they would all say the golf course is probably in the best shape that it's ever been in. There's a lot of excitement around it, and it's a good thing. I mean, in a time that seems that Graham and Anne's losing some essential services and institutions, it's one more thing that we didn't need to lose. So I'm thankful that we, I'm thankful that Council came alongside and helped us with the administration and the insurance under their umbrella, and it made it work. We had a fantastic staff there working, Shannon and Tony did a fantastic job, put in a lot of time. I think they actually enjoyed it. They were down there all hours, did a lot of clearing, a lot of maintenance that needed to be done over the years, and just the resources weren't there, and they did it, and it's really, really, an asset to the island, for sure. So, I've got some numbers here I'm going to give you just real quick, because I don't want to bore you, but we operated the golf course for 22 weeks. We had six junior members, so the junior members were under the age of 16 and under, sorry. And it was really exciting to get down there. I golfed there a couple of weeks ago, and looked across the course, and there were four teenage boys, under the age of 16, no parents or anything, just the four of them there, spending the day golfing. And I haven't known that to take place since the days of Cody Harvey and Corey Frost. I mean, they were avid golfers back in the day when curling and golf and everything were in the school program, so it kind of encouraged them to do that. They took this upon themselves, they loved the game, and they wanted to play. So to see six, they had a junior championship down there that Dwayne had for them, where they had their own club championship, and that, that worked out, so that was really exciting for us to see kids, because any sport, any membership, that's going to thrive, needs youth, right? And this is, this is where this is hopefully going. We had close to 50 regular members, which was $24,000 of intake from the membership. Just walk-on green fees, we had over $6,000. Donations, we had over $16,000 in donations that we went to different businesses to try to help us cover the lease and cover the operations going into a first year, which we didn't know. Separate from that, there was a $5,000 donation that covered the $5,000 mower that we had to replace that had a bonfire in the corner. So, the lease was $11,500, fuel was $5,500, which you can appreciate under the day we're in now, and a lot of miscellaneous things. So, come right down to the numbers, our total income, including donations, was $46,700, and the cost to operate was $39,500. So we presently had a surplus of about $8,000, but you have to understand, out of that $8,000, $16,000 of it was donations, which we really don't want to continue to go back to the businesses which are the same businesses asked by the same people all the time, looking for money, okay? And the businesses on Graham and Anne are great, they always hand out money when needed, that's just the spirit of where we are. But I'm hoping, and I'm not looking for any answers from Council tonight, because I would like you to have the opportunity to discuss this, maybe at your end-of-year budget meetings or whatever. We're asking that the Council would consider covering our lease for the operation of the golf course. We would like to continue to, you know, do what we have to with memberships and everything to operate it, but that, it's not a money-making venture, and that lease is kind of the difference between us making it work and falling behind and having to ask the citizens of Graham and Anne to come forth and donate. Our memberships, we did increase the cost of our memberships this year to try to offset it, because it's, you know, that's, that's the reality we're in. And I know one of the initial instincts would be, well, this is a rec item, we'll send it to the rec committee. And I'm going to ask you not to do that, because I don't want to rob from existing rec programs now to try to come and help the golf course. For the most part, it is an adult membership, but we're hoping, like I say, with what we saw this year and years moving forward, we can start some youth programs and get, because that is, that's how I justify coming to Council, more than anything, is for the youth, just like everything else, whether it's the arena, the ballparks, that's, that's the driving force in anything on Graham and Anne, as far as I'm concerned. So I'm just here to ask you on behalf of the golf course if you would consider in your end-of-year budget to entertain putting that as a line item in your budget. So, that's what I'm here for. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them from there.
Thanks. Michael, any questions?
How much was that lease deal?
$10,000 plus HST, which is $11,500, because it's, our, our co-op paid the lease to Brookside Golf Course, which is a corporation, and they had to have the HST and everything, so that's, that's what the, so it's actually $10,000 plus HST, which you kind of get back, maybe, if you want to look at it that way, so.
Have you had any discussions as to whether that number would continue in the same rate?
Yeah, I didn't mention that either, that we have, in looking to go to a longer-term contract, we haven't got anything in writing right now, we're going to get this kind of, that will be something that takes place over the winter through CAO Rayner ourselves, of getting that in paper form moving forward. The contract is there, based on the one-year thing, it's just a matter now of changing the dates and some other things, if I understand properly, to make that. We have a verbal agreement on a five-year lease, the terms to be the same. That hasn't, it hasn't been stated that it was going to be any different. If it was going to be different, I'm not going to ask for that. I'm just asking for this based on what we have now. If it happens to go up, then that's something that we, as a co-op, will have to deal with. So to my, that's, that's what we're asking for over the next five years.
Anyone else? Well, hearing nothing, I will say it's good timing, we're obviously in the middle of our budget cycle, so we'll.
Been here, done that. I kind of wondered.
I kind of figured that, so. Thank you very much, and it was good to see the golf course up and running this summer, and very glad it worked out.
Yeah, it did. It worked out very well. Thanks for having me.
Great, thanks. All right, so moving along to new business. 14-1 is committees, an update, and this is for me. With the resignation of Counselor Russell, it left a couple of openings on some committees, so I just wanted to give a quick update on kind of where I see this going. I thought perhaps, once we get through the whole by-election and all that, it would be worthwhile doing a complete review of the committees, but in the meantime, I think in the interim, we need to fill in a couple of holes. Finance, I have asked Counselor Boyd to sit down on that committee as well. I believe Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons is going to sit in on solid waste for us, and I'm going to suggest we leave the recreation where it is, because we have a number of non-council members who are there, and I think we've got a pretty diverse group there to start with, and we can see where that goes. Any questions on that so far? And the other thing I did want to flag is Counselor Green, I believe, sat on the golf course committee last year, and he would like us to look for a replacement for next year, if that's something we choose to continue. So maybe we can defer that with our budget discussion, and see where we end up with that, and then go from there. Any questions? Okay. 14-2 is application for donation from the Community Market Committee, CAO Rayner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your package, you'll see that the Community Market did make an application. They're in the process of doing a bit of a fundraiser with Christmas wreaths. They've got a bit of a contest where they've asked for different community members, you know, young and old, to decorate different wreaths. They're going to be able to have some prizes for the different age groups with different, different amounts. If you want, I'm not going to read this word for word, we're in a bit of a time crunch, but at the end of the day, they're looking, they need about $890. They fundraised $700 to date, and the request from the village is $190.
Questions or comments? I'm assuming there's still money in the donation line in the budget?
I would move that we grant their application for donation of $190.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14-3 is Swallow Tail Letter of Support. We had a meeting with the Swallow Tail Fundraising Committee for the repairs to the outside of the, of the lighthouse and the Lightkeeper's house. They are working on funding applications, and one of the things that they have requested is that the village write a letter of support for the project. At this point, nothing financial, they're just looking for a letter from us. So, would someone like to make a motion to that effect? You heard the motion from Counselor Greenlaw. Do we have a second? Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14-4 is Public Safety. Counselor Brown.
On October 27th, the Safety Committee had a meeting where we discussed what would happen if Cyclone Fiona had hit us, and what measures we need to take to help those in need if and when such a disaster should occur. We had a great discussion about a facility to house as many people as possible if a disaster happened. We're excited with the ideas and the possibility of help, the help we could get for our small community. Chris has some of the details that he will share with you now.
So the EMO has been something that's been on the radar, I think, since I took over interim, you know, more than a year ago. Sherry Leslie at the Fire Department spent a lot of time doing that EMO, and currently, right now, in that plan, we have the Fire Department as our warming center, mainly because they have a backup generator, so they have a way to keep, you know, water going, power on, keep warm, chance to cook, recharge cell phones, stuff like that. It's fortunate we haven't been able to use it, but let's face it, you know, the hurricane that just went through was a bit of an eye-opener. It wouldn't have taken much of a track change that would have made it more of a direct hit here locally. The Fire Department isn't sized adequately for the amount of people that could potentially be impacted, so at the end of the day, we're talking about moving our EMO warming center to the community center. But one of the conditions before you can do that is you got to have backup generation. I'm in the process of reaching out to get quotes on generators. The electrician was in, they had a bit of a struggle to try to come up with what our peak demand would be in order to source that or size that generator. But once we have those, once we get the price in place, we had a conversation, or Dan, or Counselor Boyd had that conversation with our MLA, she indicated that there would be financial help to purchase that. You know, it could be a 60/40/50/50 split, or maybe more, more in our favor. We'll have more details on that, once we get an actual price on the generator to be able to move forward. But I think for this argument, what Counselor Boyd was looking for is not so much a motion, but to kind of keep in the back of your mind that we will be looking to move the warming center in our current EMO from the Fire Hall to the community center, once we get that backup generation hopefully in place.
Any questions? Comments? Counselor Toll?
I think it's a good idea, but I didn't even know there was a warming center, to be honest. So, I didn't, I had no idea where to go. And maybe that's something, too, we should think of it, if we're going to do this, we need to make sure that there's something else there that people can find it.
The EMO, EMO plan's been in a revolving document, and once we get, like I said, once we get things in place, we'll be able to update that. But it's, it's more than just a warming center. I mean, let's face it, in case of an emergency, the Fire Department would need to focus their efforts on what they do, you know, saving lives. They don't need a bunch of civilians running around there trying to get warm and kind of be, be in the way, so. And part of the EMO is we have to have a command center. Where in that command center, you have all the heads from fire, police, ambulance, you know, EMO, all stationed here, all coordinating their efforts from one location, so everyone's kind of on the same page, so you don't have the police running out of the police station, the fire from the Fire Department, ambulance, up for the ambulance bay, everyone's in here together. So it just, it makes more sense logistically, so.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to 14-5, UMB, Letter of Support. This is also a Counselor Boyd item. There should be a template letter in your package that basically talks about some of the challenges around municipal reform, particularly on the communication level, about who is looking at an election, who is not. I understand there were mailouts in people's mailboxes that we were going to be voting, but we're not. And just trying to take some of that burden off the local municipal level, and asking the province to really take more of a proactive role in explaining what's going on with the reform and what the impacts are going to be, because it's not well-understood, I don't think, out in the general public necessarily. So, there's a template letter there that UMB has circulated to its membership, and so he's wondering if that is something that we would be willing to send on behalf of the Village of Graham and Anne. Questions or comments?
I will make a comment. I think it's something that we need to do, because it's more confusing than anything I've ever tried to figure out in my life, I think. So we need to be on, we need to get more information on what's going on, for sure.
Would that be a motion?
That would be a motion to, let's sign this and get that sent out where it needs to go.
You heard the motion from Counselor Toll. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Brown. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14-6, Graham and Anne Island Tourism, Letter of Support, CAO Rayner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, in your package, there is a package from Graham and Anne Island Tourism. There's a letter dated October 3, 2022. It says, "Steer Mayor, CAO, and Village of Graham and Anne. Graham and Anne Island Tourism was formed in 2021 during a marketing action focus group. There were five individuals out of the 20-plus in attendance who showed interest in pursuing the official organization focused solely on our island's tourism sector. Since the conception of our group, we have created a study, set out bylaws, and executive board member positions. We meet in person via video call on a weekly basis. We've been involved in some really great brainstorming sessions. Out of these, we've been able to accomplish a multitude of tasks and initiatives. One initiative that they are excited to share is that they're collaborating with Davin St. Pierre of DSP Creative Solutions. Davin is a grant researcher and creative writer hailing from the Moncton area. He has work experience with writing grants for the B.C. government and many similar entities. GMIT has been collaborating with Davin, Josh McLeod, and Mac Bork of The Property Tour since the early spring of 2022. Their intent is to create an interactive map and webpage to showcase ecologically sensitive areas, hiking trails, and the interesting biodiversity of our island has to offer. Davin is applying his knowledge of grant research and has found one through the Nebrunswick nature trusts that will fall directly in line with the funding needed to create an interactive technological interface. We are very excited about the partnership and look forward to working on this project. Please find a text and outline of the proposed project for the review," which I won't read. "GMIT is requesting letters of support to be included in their grant application, and we are asking the village, specifically the mayor and CAO, to give their blessing as shown of in-kind support. As a group, we thank you for consideration, support throughout the year, and look forward to working with the Village of Graham and Anne on future endeavors. Kindest regards, Jennifer O'Neill, Co-President; Kim Schufelt, Co-President."
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
Do we currently still have more than one tourism association, or is this the one now?
This is the only recognized one, as far as the Tourism Association is concerned of Nebrunswick.
Anyone else? Do we want to send a letter of support for this project?
Send a letter of support for the Graham and Anne Island Tourism.
You heard the motion from Counselor Layton. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. So 14-7 is an update on the medevac service. This came up, I think originally, at a Transportation Committee meeting out at the airport, and it was included, I just look back in the minutes in the September meeting in Counselor Layton's report. Basically, with a change in Transport Canada regulations, there is an impact on the local company who is providing medevac services, and it has resulted in a negotiation with the province on how that's going to look going forward. Those negotiations have basically stalled, is my understanding, if not broken off. We had written to Premier Higgs after, subsequent to the September meeting, we had been passed to Health Minister Fitch, who passed us to A and B, and we've redirected ourselves back to Minister Fitch. But basically, at this point, I am concerned about what the impact on the community is going to be come December, if we no longer have the local coverage for medevac, and it is being piecemealed essentially from off-island services. I think we all remember a few years ago, when that had a tragic outcome, and I think the impact for the community is, it could be. the impact for the community is, it could be significant. I'm not really sure that there's something specific I'm looking for at this point, but I did just want to give an update that the new, the Transport Canada regulations come into effect December 12th, and at that point, there could be significant changes in how our medevac service looks on the island. So, given where we are and how things are going, I thought it was the responsible thing to come back and say we're, we're still working on it, we're still trying for a meeting, but so far, things aren't going well. Any questions or comments? Counselor Green?
Transport Canada, I assume our MP is involved somehow in this now?
I believe we may have spoken to him about it when he was here, and certainly, our MLA has raised it, and she is looking for additional federal contacts to be working with on the issue as well. I think it's certainly, one of, one of my concerns, and I think that's how we talked about it when our MP was here, was about the isolation of Grammontan and the need to maybe designate us as remote or have some sort of special designation, because we are, we have a different, we are different than other communities in the province, given that you can't access us by land and where we are. So, anyway, that's, that's that. Any other questions or comments? I will just say, I'm assuming we're all okay continuing on the road. We are, it's just, okay. Fourteen eight, Speed Signs, Quotes and Services, Counselor Layton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, fellow councilors. As everyone is aware, the radar speed signs in our school zone have been taken down due to ongoing maintenance issues. I guess there's a real problem with the, the program, the, the...
Software?
Pardon me?
Software?
The software, that's, that's what I was looking for. Public safety is an important role of council, and even more important when the safety of our children may be at risk. Going through the something on another file, our average traffic we have here is around thirty-four hundred hits a day, so that puts a lot of traffic in front of the school zone each day. It's a staggering number, really. Where are we here? Sorry. Our clerk, Esme, helped me out on this file, and she reached out to three different companies and received quotes back from two of them. The cheapest quote that we got was from Absolute Traffic Signs and Solutions. They're out of Moncton, they're local. They have, they service over, they have eight hundred units in the Maritimes. They service over ninety percent of New Brunswick, so I think that's the best company to go for. They're local, they can get on the phone, you can talk to them, they're in Moncton, if they need service, service problems. So, there was two options. There was option A, which was come in at thirty-eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven for a new eleven-inch Evolution eleven-inch, it's called. It's eleven inches high, it's two digits. It has a solar battery pack, a backup, and it has two colors, yellow and white strobe, basically the same as what we had. The option B for thirty-nine-fifty was a twelve-inch, three-digit solar with battery pack-up. Three digits for higher speed zones. If we ever wanted to use it in another situation, we could throughout the summer, like, for whatever reason may be. But, there's three colors, you have yellow, you have red, and you white strobe. So, you, the parameters can be set, so, I mean, if you've got somebody coming really fast, it'll flash red, or if they're not coming at a moderate speed, it might be yellow. It's whatever the parameters of the staff of the village sets up. So, it does have cloud-based software available for the first three years, and after that, it's four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a year. But, we can go with the standard system, which is just a wireless within a thousand feet to upload and download, and that's no charge. So, you can just go over to Grand River and get on your phone and plug in your parameters, and off you go. There's all kinds of data that can be collected, traffic numbers, speed, average speeds, a lot of different information. It's just, it, there's a whole package there that we could use, and I'm looking for council support in replacing the signs that we already had there with option B. Did I say everything I needed to say?
I think so. Are there any questions for Counselor Layton?
Was that thirty-one fifty each, or thirty-one fifty-two?
It was thirty-eight-eighty-seven each, plus tax.
Oh, that was option A.
Oh, yes, option B, thirty, thirty. Option A, thirty-eight-eighty-seven, option B, thirty-nine-fifty-three.
Oh, thirty-nine, okay.
And it's a significant improvement for a couple, for a hundred-and-fifty bucks. And I don't know where Alyssa can find the money in the budget, but, I mean, if we take it out of our reserves or whatever, I think it's an important project that needs to be, needs to be rectified and put back in place. I'm not asking you, but I'm just...
Any other questions or comments?
I seem to be commenting too many a lot. I just, I mean, it's going to take more than those to get people to slow down. You can have the fanciest sign out there you want, but they're still doing sixty or seventy. Until, like, even myself, when I come into it, I'm like, oh, shit, and then I hit the brakes and slow down. But, I mean, I think it's great, and they, we do need signage there. I think we need to make it more explanatory, too, that it's not Sunday morning at ten o'clock that you have to go thirty kilometers an hour.
That can all be...
Like, it's...
That's why it just came down, they would go, I'm not supposed to.
Yeah. So, I, I think it should be the ones that you use from here from the office. I don't think you should have to go out to the site and change them over if the weather's not good, or...
Can maybe be programmed?
One set...
It's off your phone, it's just an app off your phone.
So, it can be programmed for the week, or just programmed for two hours?
Whatever you want, it's got to be programmed.
I think having the lights that it does...
It works, it works.
It slows me down.
It slows me down.
I think the sign underneath could be bigger, because, I mean, you cannot read that as you drive. Not like, even if you are doing thirty kilometers an hour, you know, where it says, "From this hour until this hour,"
That's true.
"School days only," that's, it's hard to read. I mean, most of us know it, but there are a lot of people visiting or here for business that, you know, they just go by whether it's flashing or not.
Anybody else?
I like the fact that it flashes that if you're going too fast, because that definitely would attract your attention.
Have you...
And bright colors.
Well, I think the police had a field day for the first school year without those signs there. They made a killing, and they fined a lot of people, and specifically because those signs weren't there, and people don't see them. I don't see signs, I mean, it's a familiar road, it's a familiar road, nobody sees the signs.
So, Counselor Layton, are you going to make a motion to proceed with option B if there is a surplus in funds in the budget?
I will make that motion, if I'm sold next stop here.
I will add, while Counselor Layton's making first stuff, that typically what Esme will do is she'll be in touch with the school, and she'll program the entire school year into that, so all the holidays, all the weekends, everything's in there for the entire year. The issue with the old one was, it was a US-based company, the software was bad, we couldn't get the, the app to read, change the schedule, and that's why it was blinking all the time. But, hopefully with the local county, we'll have a lot more, a lot better service.
So, like the motion, they can make a motion that we accept Absolute Traffic and Sign Solutions quote of thirty-nine-fifty-three-forty each for two new Evolution twelve-inch radar signs.
You heard the motion from Counselor Layton. Do we have a second here? Second by Counselor Turner, question. Counselor Green?
If you see that could be programmed if you're within a thousand feet?
Yes.
Wouldn't it make more sense to have the school do that? They know what their schedule is for, you know, paid days, off P D days and things like that.
I don't know who's going to volunteer down at schools to take care of that for us, but maybe there is, but our staff has, has me done a great job, I think.
They give us, yeah, they give us all their time, and all holidays, every day, they'll be closed, and we'll bring all that one. It's not too bad if all of them are there.
And I think people need to realize that it's nineteen seconds more than what it takes to go through at thirty kilometers an hour. It's simple math. It's four hundred meters at fifty, or thirty. And it's nineteen seconds difference, just to be a little more safe, so.
So, we have a motion on the floor. Any more question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Transfer Station, Counselor Toll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I just wanted to say that I got Esme to put this package in your, your thingies for tonight, with the minis.
It's in the mailbox, it's the second chance.
This is just from Sonya, the woman that we've been working with through the Used Fishing Year Coalition with the provinces. And it's our plan, we've already done the first load of traps, and this is our plan going forward with what will be done for the end of the year. I did read through it, but I didn't, um, it tells you exactly what we've done. We've, so far, three containers of fishing rope have been removed from July and August, and we're making plans to have more traps picked up and taken away for aim. This described, though, with some pictures. I'd asked Esme as well to post a link to this on the, our village website, if anybody out there wants to have a look and see what we've done and where we've gone with it, and everybody can have this just to have a look at. But, it's kind of an interesting, I hit you with the feel-good stuff, and now I'm going to hit you with the not-so-feel-good stuff, so, it's not that bad. As you are aware, our transfer station at the moment is shorthanded, and we are limited in what we can use our C D, C D site for at the moment. Our contract with Island Waste is coming to a close at the end of the year, and we need to get a sense of where we are going from here. There will be some changes needed, but I know we can work through this as long as we work together as a community. We need to begin the process of working towards a new contract. We've been talking about how to go about this, and there are a lot of changes that are happening in the new year about a lot of things in provincial governments, including solid waste. We don't know anything about them yet. So, to get the proverbial ball rolling, I'd like to make the following request. I am making a motion for proposals to be submitted for the operation of our transfer station and the C and D site located on Grammontan, and we would evaluate these based on cost, hours of operation, and ability to implement waste reduction strategies.
You heard the motion from Counselor Toll. Do we have a second here?
I'd second that.
Second by Counselor Green, question?
So, you would like us to put out our fee for the transfer station?
Just, yes, please.
And I think one of the key things in that is that it's not necessarily based on the lowest price, but it's about how the operation could look in the future, so it doesn't box us into...
Yes.
Into a corner if there's somebody who has some really good ideas for waste reduction. We've got a little bit of flexibility there to evaluate, and we can work towards that. So, sorry, that was my comment on it. Any other question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Moving right along, fifteen one is the Transportation Committee report, Counselor Layton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to just talk about the brush cutting tender for a second. Coastal transport is making, coastal enterprise, the story is making great progress in our road maintenance tender. We'll be going up over the Dock Road probably tomorrow, then through New Brook, then through North Head. There have been no real issues arise from the contract to date, as most, I believe, see the benefits and understand it isn't as drastic as some may have thought that it was going to be. They've been very accommodating and respectful to people's concerns, and they're doing a great job in welcoming the extra layer of safety while traveling our municipal destinies. That's that, and I just want to, one, I'm pleased to report Mayor Morris, our committee and village staff welcomed your Honorable Jeff Carr, Minister of Transportation and Infrastructure, and our MLA, Andrea Anderson-Mason, to the alma mater, the Reverend there. C A O Chris Rayner and myself gave a tour, gave both a tour to our beautiful island, as well as the many deficiencies in respect to our island's highway infrastructure. It was a welcomed opportunity to meet with the minister on a personal level, jump in the ditch, look at some culverts, crawl under some bridges, we done all that, it was kind of fun. We had a chance to speak to some of the locals, and you got some really good input with possible solutions. We came back, and we had a meeting here in council chambers. We discussed in no particular order, we surfacing Route seven-seven-six in Engleshead to include the active transportation opportunities. We discussed the potential for hardship with D T R, where we'd have more control of the services we need, we use, and how they are delivered to our community. Councilman Jane Turner pitched our needs to the minister with respect to extending the supplemental season of the Grammontan Five, as well as long-term goal of replacing the Five with a new ship. I can't speculate what actions the minister will take to address our many issues. He left with a long list, and I'm comfortable and confident. Our concerns were well-presented and understood by the minister, and I look forward to a stronger, we already have a stronger relations with D T R already, just from that meeting, and I look forward to possibilities, or endless, I guess, coming down the pipe, but we've got the guy, he's, he was on-site, and he's seen our conditions, and he's more than willing to work with us. So, it's, it's a big day, I think, for the Village of Grammontan moving forward. Thank you. Is there anything else I should add?
I don't think so on that one, but thank you, Counselor Layton. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to fifteen two, which is the Library Committee report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You all have the manager's report, your agendas, and I'll just hit the highlights here, if I could. Just because school is closed, doesn't mean there's not much going on at the library. Library is very busy during the summer, they hire three students to help out there. They had Jillian Jones, Grace Corkshank, and Kylie Cook there for summer reading club activities, and they also, for the first time, they partnered with Elementary Literacy New Brunswick to offer pre-elf, elf, and Barton training, tutoring, that's a reading tutoring programs. There's lots of arts and crafts going on, there's games going on, there's a STEAM program happening, and even some baby massages going on in there, which is quite something, but it's very busy in there. The Story Walk posted on the Anchorage Bowl, Boardwalk happened, and they hope to have two of them going next summer, so. There was some fundraising going on, there was used book sale, raised six-hundred-and-six dollars, and the summer reading knock craft raised one-thousand-thirty dollars. So, it was a very busy time, and, anyway, that is the report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Any questions? All right. So, moving on to item number seventeen. Seventeen one is approval to pay the following invoices from the General Operating Fund. Universal Truck and Trailer, the walking floor trailer for thirty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and fifty-four cents. You heard the motion from Counselor Toll. Do we have a second here? Second by Counselor Greenlaw, question?
Is this the one that's not working now?
That's the one that was not working. We hope after spending thirty-one thousand dollars that it works.
Oh, okay, this is the, this is the repaired bill.
This is the repaired one, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the, this is the twenty-twenty.
Right.
That has the, the different style floor in it.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Seventeen two is approval to pay invoices from the General Capital Fund. 17-2 is approval to pay invoices from the General Capital Fund. Brunswick Engineering for the Airport Rehab, $14,464.13. And Northern Construction, it's a progress payment of $365,340.63.
I think the motion raises out of the General Capital Fund.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Green, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 18-1 is looking for a motion to transfer funds from our line of credit to our General Capital Fund to cover bills for the airport project. You heard the motion from Councilor Greenlaw. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Layton, question?
What were we talking about, we just, the 360 bucks?
And the Department of Engineering bill. The two that they just read of the General Capital Fund, a lot of the transfer, a lot of credit to cover those two bills.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19 is closed session. We have four items. Snow removal tender, personnel, CAO, recreation programmer, and building inspector.
Motion moving to closed session.
Heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do I have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Toll. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Recall this regular council meeting of the Village of Grammeran to order. We were in closed session to talk about four items. The first was financial, the snow removal tenders, and we had two sets of tenders. One was for our main annual snow removal at the Fire Hall Business Center, Community Center, water storage tanks, and I think, and thrifties. Somebody like to make a motion about that tender?
I would move that we accept the low tender from Desmond Contracting for those locations.
You heard the motion from Councilor Green. Do we have a seconder?
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilor Toll, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. We also had a snow removal tender for the airport, and that is generally issued as a five-year tender, and that was the pricing that we received. I think there was discussion about potentially looking at negotiating the duration of that tender, based on potential changes to our own personnel here at the village, so would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
I would make a motion that we accept that with the conditions that we request. I've already forgotten what she said.
That we negotiate the airport tender?
We negotiate the year, term?
Term.
The term, I'm sorry.
You heard the motion from Councilor Toll. Do we have a seconder?
I should.
Seconded by Councilor Turner, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Second was personnel, CAO.
I'd make a motion that we accept the CEO, CAO's recommendation to make the rec coordinator...
You're on the wrong one.
Oh, that's, oh, okay.
Hold that thought.
Troy, Chris.
Sorry.
Jump the gun.
Okay. Okay, moving up to 19.2.
I would make a motion that council accept the recommendation of the Personnel Committee regarding the CAO.
You heard the motion by Councilor Green. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilor Brown, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded?
Aye.
Motion carried. 19-3, Personnel, Recreation Programmer, UROP Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons.
There we go. I'd make a motion that we accept the CAO recommendation to make this full-time job for the Recreation Programmer.
Heard the motion by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Turner, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19-4 is Personnel, Building Inspector. Our current building inspector is going to be done at the end of December, so we are looking for a replacement. And I think we are going to put, ask staff to put together a job description for that position, and to put together a request for proposals.
I'd make a motion that we do that.
You heard the motion by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Toll, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. That's the last time we try to do closed session before the meeting, because it's way too long to remember. So our next regular council meeting will be here on December 5th at 7:30 PM.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, everybody.